Okay, let's uh let the record reflect. We have reconvened virtually with all members present. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Here, we have a motion for the executive minutes of October twenty-six, twenty twenty.
So moved.
And these have already been discussed. An executive, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, and now a motion for the regular minutes of October twenty-six, twenty twenty.
So moved.
I have a second. Alright, any discussion or corrections, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome all, and just the votes in Madison have now been certified, so we can officially congratulate Don Hoover and Bob Landerkin. As this was the first meeting after certification, Bob Landerkin did join the executive session as an observer, and he's up here as a panelist, but will not be participating in discussions until the new year, but he can comment like everyone else as a resident when those times come up. So Bob, it's great to have you back at the table and that you're here during this transition, because it's all very important for continually of government.
Thank you.
And last Monday, as many are aware, we held a special Borough Council meeting for the announcement of affordable housing application. The meeting covered the plans for Madison meeting or obligations, which include thirty units at the current Civic Center site and fourteen units on Community Place, adjacent to the existing housing there. The on the half a acre that was transferred from the Board of Education to the borough, and that was for the sole purpose of meeting our housing obligations. The recording of the Zoom meeting and the PowerPoint presentation from Dr. Susan Blixstein are available on RoseNet if you missed that meeting or you want to follow up on it. And on Thursday, November twelfth, the Sheriff's Hope Mobile Outreach Fan was at Farmer's Market, at the Farmer's Market, and when I've visited them, I received Arcan training, and which is, you know, something like my CPR that I may never use, but if I do need to, it will certainly make a difference in someone's life. If you feel that you may be in contact with someone that's struggling with addiction, I can tell you that training was simple, only took a few minutes, and you're given an Arcan kit upon completion, so I would recommend looking into that. And last week, along with a few other council members and borough employees, I attended the virtual League of Municipalities Conference, which normally would have been Atlantic City. I was on a panel on communications during a crisis, and I was a moderator for exploring the plastic bag and legislation. I also sat in on a session on liquor license reform and attended the annual risk management session, which will give Madison credit on our insurance premium, which is much greater than the cost of the fee to attend the conference. That was, it's got two thumbs up from our CFO. And if you, I don't know if you had a chance to be downtown this past weekend, but it certainly had a great feel of the holiday season, strolling music, busy stores, especially the Pink Care, which had been highlighted on CBS News the night before, and even a few lucky shoppers were awarded prizes. And maybe we might be hearing about that more in the subsequent reports come up shortly. And while Santa will not be walking with the parade, I have gotten word from the North Pole that he is coming this Friday to visit Madison. So a couple of things are going on, and this will be pushed out through our social media and various news methods, that around ten o'clock, Santa will begin his journey around town on Duralding, our antique fire truck. He will travel each street in Madison, and for everyone's safety, Santa will only be waving, but his helpers will be handing out treats for all those who cheer him on throughout the journey. Just listen to the siren, and you'll know that Santa's on his way. But keep in mind, while it is true that Santa can visit every child in the world on Christmas Eve, it will take him four to five hours to visit everyone in Madison, so your patience is greatly appreciated. And you've probably even noticed our beautiful Christmas tree in downtown. This year's tree, a spruce tree that was growing on the grounds of St. Vincent Martyr for years, was donated by Father George from, and the parish. When first approached about offering it up for this year's tree, Father George was hesitant in removing the tree that had been so found, that he thought, he said, wouldn't it be truly wonderful if this town was a beautiful tree in this year that we are so in need of the Christmas spirit? And because of the generous donation of the tree, it will stand at Waverly Place throughout the holiday season as a sign of hope, peace, and light, reminding us to let our light shine throughout the acts of kindness, care, and compassion, and joy. And we are so thankful to Father George and the entire St. Vincent Martyr Parish for sharing the tree, all to enjoy. And as far as the lighting the tree, obviously, we cannot gather on Waverly Place to make that happen. So shortly after Operation Santa Claus is completed, after he's visited all the streets, there'll be a live broadcast on the Borough of Madison YouTube channel, and we'll also have links where will be posted at www.rosecitychristmas.com. And about five minutes before the lighting notices will be posted on the Borough of Madison's social media channels, Twitter, Facebook and Twitter, directing people to the live stream. And remember, it is our primary concern that everyone's health and safety during these unprecedented difficult times, so therefore, do not go down to Waverly Place. Stay home and enjoy the light in the tree and the comfort of your own home. But we first must have to get through Thanksgiving. And if you're like me, months ago, you were probably looking forward to a normal Thanksgiving after all the sacrifices we have made during this pandemic. Well, it's not gonna happen. This is no reason to let it ruin a great holiday. A holiday that when you give thanks, a holiday for family, even if it's virtual or a smaller gathering spread out in your garage. You can let the pandemic ruin your Thanksgiving, but you can take on the challenge and make it a very special day. As we discussed this morning in the Tri-Town Cares Meeting today, it's going to be a very different Thanksgiving, but remember, it is just one day. A day that should we ignore the call for small gatherings and social distancing could affect the quality of our life, our lives, and the lives of our loved ones for years to come. We already have seen major upticks of the spread of COVID-19, and a holiday that is based on reunions could be catastrophic, but we don't. But it doesn't have to be that way, so please, follow the guidelines, be safe, be well, and have a very happy but different Thanksgiving. And now on to reports from committees. Finance and Borough Clerk, Council President Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Finance Department, Ray and Jim have been very busy working on the capital budget and the operating budgets with all the departments. They will present a five-year capital plan on December fourteenth, council meeting. Back in September, Jim estimated that the revenue shortfall would be approximately $1.2 million. He has since revised his estimates and is now expecting $1.5 million revenue shortfall. The 2021 budget is going to be tight, so capital spending in 2021 will be smaller. In addition to the capital, Jim and Ray will also present preliminary surplus or fund balances figures on September fourteenth. From the tax collector, if you have not paid your fourth quarter taxes, you're late, and will have to pay an interest penalty. So far, we have collected ninety-six point eight percent of the fourth quarter taxes, which is very similar to past years, so congratulations to all the residents. The senior freeze application deadline again was extended to December thirty-first. Any seniors who have not done so should bring their forms in to the tax office. Finally, our tax sale advertisement has been published in the Madison Eagle beginning this Thursday, November twelfth. The advertisement will be published four times, which is required by state statute. The tax sale will be held on December ninth. I wanted to kind of report this because it's something that has come out from our Personnel Director. The governor recently issued an executive order that requires employers to survey employees every day to confirm that they have not been exposed to COVID-19, and they do not have any symptoms. Personnel Director Sandy Emmerich and Communications and Technology Coordinator Michael Pelissier did a great job planning a simple phone app that can keep the medical information confidential while tracking these surveys and employees. Best of all, they had the system implemented in just a few days. Each employee now logs into the WorkSafe app every day and fills out the survey. This is just another example of how we are taking employee safety very seriously here at the borough, as well as making sure that all of our residents who do visit the borough are safe. Thank you, Mayor.
Let me try that again, which might, I'm new to this. Public, thank you, Carmella, and public safety, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. First, from the Police Department. On November ninth, Lieutenant John Mishah and Lieutenant Joe Longo gave a presentation to about a hundred people from the Rosary Society on the history of the Madison Police Department. And then during the week of November tenth, the Madison Police Department hosted training for the Morris County Critical Incident Debriefing Team. This debriefing team was developed by professionals who were acutely aware of the painful toll stressful events have on all our first responders. The goal of this team is to make people, is to take care of the people within our departments with the hopes of minimizing the damaging cumulative effects those calls have on our officers, and this is important now more than ever. And then from the Fire Department, a family just emailed the council to thank us for our wonderful fire department. I just wanted to read it in part. This family, the Maldonados, moved to Madison two years ago, and they live on Del Bar Drive. They absolutely love this town, the family events, the shops and the restaurants. We were very impressed with the town, but it took an emergency response on behalf of the Madison Fire Department for us to realize we wouldn't want to live anywhere else. They were at their neighbors, and they were on the back porch distancing, following COVID protocols. Her husband went home to get some drinks and was surprised to see that a fire had started in the garage. And they immediately called nine-one-one, and the response was amazing. Captain Ed Nun was at their house in what seemed like seconds, and the fire trucks were quickly behind. The fire was quickly put out, everything was safe, and the damage was limited to just the side of, inside the garage. Captain Ed Nun also walked us through what happened. He came to assist at every point after the fire, helping us to deal with the insurance company, Verizon, and restoration of the damage. This was one of the scariest moments of our life in what has been a very difficult year. However, we are beyond grateful for the first responders of this town, and just wanted to thank everyone involved for keeping us safe. This really is an incredible place to live. And then finally, from the Planning Board, the draft master plan is up on rosenet.org for people to read and review, and the Planning Board is hoping to have a hearing, a public hearing on the draft in December. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing that story. Very, very nice. Public work today, Jerry, Minister.
Parks Department have been very busy the last few years picking up leaves on Madison streets. They have made two sweeps of the town and anticipate hopefully making two more sweeps before the snow comes. In addition to the leaf work, the Parks Department collected recycling and waste misses, repaired the Dodge Field fence, blew leaves at James Street Park Dodge Field Basketball Court, Morris Place, and Summer Hill Park. The Mechanics Department continued their work maintaining the borough's fleet, including the Police Department vehicles, the street sweeper, parks and road vehicles, including the backhoe and fire department equipment. The Sewer Department performed daily operation and maintenance and markouts for contractor excavations, storm pipe replacements completed on Ridgeville Avenue, and basin cleaning. From the Engineering Department, construction capital project status, the final striping on Albright Circle in Beverly was completed last week for Midwest Construction. Paving at the Lucy D basketball courts was completed last week as well. Shafano's Construction is planning a one-day mill and overlay on Highland Avenue between Rosedale and Britton to resurface that utility project. It was a water main replacement on Tuesday. Plans for the 2021 road improvement are needing completion for award next year. A grant application for Green Avenue's bump-out curb extensions was approved by NJDOT in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand. The Dodge Field restroom building, final inspections, and contract closeout will be completed next week. Plans to improve Dodge Field Playground are in progress for awards next year. And finally, the pump removal from Well AB Treatment Plant was completed for inspection and repair work last Friday. That's all, that's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Media Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a very short report tonight from the seniors. The Senior Citizens Advisory Committee is moving forward on assessing seniors' desires and needs for senior services. A team has been identified, they are getting whatever data exists from the senior center, and a survey is being drafted. They have several groups lined up to distribute the survey, Library, the YMCA, Thursday Morning Club, Housing Authority, et cetera. So that's underway. From the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, the museum is open and will be able to accommodate visitors on a limited basis, roughly a maximum of twenty-five people at a time. Meanwhile, this week, the museum is installing a new window exhibit in the Education Annex, which will be accessible free of charge to everyone, since it is designed to be viewed from the sidewalk. The exhibit reflects the borough and the chamber's theme, Home for the Holidays, and is a curated selection of historic postcards of Madison sites and buildings. Included is an interactive component where visitors can scan a QR code for a downloadable map and take a walking tour to see what locations look like today. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, and Health, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. First, just to reiterate what Mayor Bob said at the beginning, and I don't often do this, but a personal plea as somebody who has had friends and family affected by COVID, please keep your gathering small, stay home, stay safe. And as a little tidbit, Zoom has released all limitations for Thanksgiving Day. You can have as many people as you want, you can be on as long as you want to encourage that small gathering. It'll be the first year in twenty-five years, we haven't traveled to New Hampshire and Massachusetts. It's gonna be weird, but we're gonna stay safe. Onto the official report. The Madison Health Department has concluded our seasonal flu clinics, providing more than five-hundred-and-twenty doses of flu vaccine this fall. Our rabies clinic is scheduled for Saturday, December fifth. Like our flu clinics, appointments will be required. Online registration and more information is available on RoseNet or by calling the Health Department. Here come the COVID updates. As of today, Madison reports two-hundred-and-seventy-four total cases of COVID-19. Twenty-eight cases remain open and are still being monitored by the Health Department. The Madison Health Department continues to work closely with the school district, providing support through consultation, guidance, and public health investigations. As our numbers indicate, Madison is not immune to the continued surge of new cases throughout our state and in our country. The second wave is here, it is even more critical now than it was just two weeks ago to strongly considering altering your Thanksgiving plan. This will hopefully assist us to getting the surge under control and ensure we are not in an even more dangerous scenario going into holiday seasons at the end of the year. On the recommendation of our health officer, the borough has postponed the start of borough-sponsored winter recreation program. Guidance has been shared with other organizations in the borough that offer privately-run sports programs to ensure that should they continue operating, they are taking as many infection mitigation steps as possible. Morris County and the state continue to see cases and contacts associated with indoor sports programs. The large number of contacts created through these types of programs have placed a disproportionate strain on contact tracing efforts in recent weeks. The list of states and U.S. territories included in New Jersey's travel advisory has increased to forty-six. However, given the current case rate in New Jersey and the case rate throughout the country, current guidance is to limit interstate travel to and from New Jersey as much as possible. If you don't need to travel out of state, simply stay home. Remember, the choices we make can have a major impact on the lives of our friends and neighbors. They can also impede our community's ability to operate schools, recreation programs, and stay Madison strong. So continue to wash your hands, use face coverings, practice social distance, and stay home and get tested if you don't feel well. And that's the health report, and just to reiterate, John, myself, Lisa Ellis, Bob, got to be downtown and award gift certificates to random shoppers who were there on Saturday between noon and three. So, and that'll continue through the holidays with others as well as joining us. So it was a cool experience, the seeing the faces was kind of fun, so look for us and shop local. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. It was lots of fun, and we welcomed a family from, and I think will forever think that Madison is a great place to go. And initially, I was insulted that they didn't recognize me, and then once I figured out they were from, and all was good. But they then went on to another store to spend more money, which they might not have done. And Utilities, Ms. Arlick.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Electric Department, the department has completed line clearance on Shunpike Road and Garfield Avenue. The Electric Department has installed and completed the new underground electric service to the new Dodge Field Playground Fieldhouse. Between November thirteenth and sixteenth, there were numerous calls for storm and storm debris-related outages. Those occurred on Greenwood Avenue, Palmera Road, Sampson Avenue, Barton Street, and Central Avenue. And as the mayor mentioned, the Electric Department assisted in cutting down the annual Christmas tree, which was donated by St. Vincent's Church, and installed it on Waverly Place. The department will be stringing the lights for the holidays, and I just want to add my thanks to the parish of St. Vincent Martyr and to Father George for the generous donation of this beautiful tree, and especially the spirit of hope and peace in which it was given to the borough. From the Water Department, the Water Department made fire hydrant repairs based on the findings of the annual hydrant flushing program, which recently concluded, and they have placed a hydrant on Prospect Street back in service as a result of the repairs. The Water Department assisted the Electric Department at the new Dodge Field Playground Building by digging and installing underground conduit for the electric service. And in kind, the Electric Department assisted the Water Department by helping to install new two-inch water service that will supply water to the new building as well as to the irrigation system to the baseball and football fields. That's all for Utilities.
Thank you. Any communications or petitions?
Yes, Mayor. Council received two communications. As indicated, there was an email from the Maldonados of Del Barton regarding the fire at their house, and the other is an email from, what was it, November the eighteenth, from Resident John Hinahan of Kensington Road regarding the police response to a neighbor's call.
Thank you, and now we're on to our first of two invitations for discussion. This is an opportunity for the public to comment or ask questions on only our discussion items on the agenda and our resolutions. There will be another invitation for discussion later in the meeting on any other subject. So again, this is limited, and I'll tell you what those topics are that you can comment on. And if you do decide you want to comment, you do it by clicking on your hand, to raise your hand. And if you're on a phone, you're gonna do it by hitting star nine. And for security reasons, we cannot recognize anyone listed as anonymous or call without a phone number identified. When you are recognized unmuted, you must first state your name and address before any comments. Failure to do so may result in you being muted or disconnected. And then the very next thing is you must state the agenda item or resolution you're commenting on, since again, this is a limited discussion time. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes or less, but you will be given a one-minute grace period and stop before. And so not to take from your time, we'll capture your questions during your comments and answer them if possible during the agenda discussion. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on, let me tell you what the agenda items are, sorry, getting ahead of myself. Agenda discussions, we have the Open Space Trust Fund requests and two ordinances that are up for introduction related to that. And then we have capital ordinances that are being canceled. And these are the following resolutions you may comment on, and these will also be part of the consent agenda, so you'll understand what's in the consent agenda when we get to that on the agenda. Resolution two eighty-five, resolution authorized acceptance of a settled agreement with an employee. Resolution two eighty-six is rejecting non-responsive bids for the 2020 removal and proper recycle of leaves. This is removing the leaves from the EPW yard. There was an amendment that was added that had to require publication, so it will be rebid. After all, current bids rejected. Resolution two eighty-seven is authorize the appointment of acting Detective Sergeant Bart Glab as sergeant in the Madison Police Department effective tomorrow morning. Congratulations, Bart Glab. Resolution two eighty-eight, resolution canceling completed capital improvement ordinances, and you'll be hearing about that shortly. Resolution two eighty-nine is authorizing membership in the Texas Interlocal Purchasing System, known as TIPS, and this is another opportunity for us to make purchases in the most efficient and cheapest manner. Resolution two ninety is authorize renewal of membership in the North Jersey Municipal Employee Benefit Fund, and this is related to the dental insurance offered our employees. Resolution two ninety-one is authorizing a prescribed burn at the Madison Recreation Complex. This is in the, the, call it the grassy area, the little hill. The idea is there'll be a prescribed burn, and then we'll bring back the ability to grow, create a nice wildflower meadow. And keep in mind, these prescribed burns happen all on a regular basis throughout the county, including some in the recent years in Chatham Township. And then resolution two ninety-two is authorizing use of the community pool parking lot and fire pit area by Boy Scout Patriots Pass fifty-three fifty-eight. And those are consents, so you may comment on any of those items. If you're wishing to comment on those items, please raise your hand. And seeing none, we close this part of the meeting. And we move on to agenda discussions, and the first one again is the Open Space Trust Fund request, Austria.
Great, thank you, Mayor. The Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Advisory Committee met and recommends to the council that we give grant support to Hartley Dodge Memorial East Wing and the Plaza Reconstruction Renovation. So if you have any questions, then they're on for ordinance tonight. One is for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and the other is for four hundred. Thank you.
Any other questions or, again, these ordinances, so it's ordinance forty-one and, and ordinance forty-two, so, get the titles up here, sorry. So ordinance again, forty-one is appropriate, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand Open Space Trust Fund for the swing renovations, Hartley Dodge, and that will move us closer to full utilization of this building again. And then ordinance forty-two is appropriating four-thousand for the renovation, restoration of the Plaza, which is certainly a very historic part of our town, a plaza that has seen troops head off to World War II and has seen gatherings in recent years, and certainly celebration, memorial, or recognition of Memorial Day and other events, so it'd be great to have that taken care of. We now move on to capital ordinance cancellations. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this brief every year. It's appropriate for council to do this. This is a ministerial action where we review, Finance Department reviews, open ordinances, capital ordinances that were written. Some of these were written back and passed as far back as 2014. And we determined that the project has been completed and that the excess funds that are in those ordinances can be reverted back into the Capital Improvement Fund and then re-appropriate by council for other purposes. There are three capital improvement funds that we have. We have the Municipal Capital Improvement Fund, General Capital. We have the Electric Capital Improvement Fund, and we have the Water Capital Improvement Fund. The list that was included and attached to the resolution and part of the information submitted to council summarizes those amounts. And I don't think there's any questions. All these are, it's appropriate to cancel and administration is asking council to advance this resolution.
Again, those totals with multiple ordinances, general capital, seventy- General Capital, $72,000 and change. Electric Capital, $32,000 and Water Capital, $15,000. That will be in the consent agenda. Any other questions or comments? And we now move on for ordinances for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance scheduled for hearing was introduced by title and passed on first reading of the regular meeting of the council held on Monday, November the 9th. 2020 was posted and filed according to law and copies were made available to general public requesting same.
I call it ordinance 40-2020 for second reading. Ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison Amending Chapter 75, Section 7514 of the Borough Code entitled Building Construction Regarding Building Permits to Increase Fees.
I open hearing to the public. For anyone who wants to comment on the same guidelines stated before, please click the hand or hit star nine if you're on the phone. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 40-2020.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
This is Vitale.
Yes.
Ms. Bailey.
Yes.
Ms. Byrne.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Zerlick.
Yes.
I declare ordinance 40-2020 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice there in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. We're now on to our second for invitation for discussion for the public. This is when you may comment on any topic. Again, the same rules apply. Do raise your hand and when you're unmuted and called forward for a single statement is your name and address. And then try to keep your comments to three minutes or less, but we will give you the one-minute grace period. Anyone wishing to comment, please raise your hand now. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and we go on to introductory ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for Monday, December the 14th, 2020. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on a bulletin board and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading. Ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinance by title. Ordinance 41-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison Appropriating $250,000 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for renovations and restorations of the East Wing of the Hartley Dodge Memorial.
Mayor, I move ordinance 41-2020.
I'll second.
Any further council discussion?
Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
Mayor.
Of course you may.
You know I was gonna anyway. So I think that this is, and I want to say, you know, thank you to Austria for leading this with Open Space Committee. You know, this is, Hartley Dodge is like our home. You know, it represents a lot of what Madison is all about. And I think it's wonderful that we could finally move on and get the East Wing done. And as everybody knows, you know, the front part, the Plaza has been in dire need of reconstructing. So, you know, kudos and thank you, thank you, the residents of Madison, that we have an open space trust fund to go and go ahead and do these kind of rest, restorations so that we could keep this lovely building the way it is. That's it.
Thank you. And also recognizing the partnership with grants to help make this happen. But it's truly a partnership and the partner and working with the Hartley Dodge trustees who all purpose is to care for this great building. Any further discussion? A roll call vote, please.
This is Vitale.
Yes.
Ms. Bailey.
Yes.
Ms. Byrne.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Zerlick.
Yes.
Hey, ordinance 42-2020.
Ordinance, the Borough of Madison Appropriating $400,000 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for renovations and restoration of the Hartley Dodge Memorial Plaza.
Mayor, I move ordinance 42-2020.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? And much of what Carmella just mentioned is, you know, for this. A roll call vote, please.
This is Vitale.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Byrne.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Zerlick.
Yes.
Okay, now on to the consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda, Resolution 285-2020 to Resolution 292-2020.
Second.
Any discussion or any that need to be polled? Okay, roll call vote, please.
This is Vitale.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Ms. Byrne.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Ms. Zerlick.
Yes.
All right, there is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher totals?
For the current fund, $7,1148.23. For the General Capital Fund, $1,718.52. The Electric Operating Fund, $497,417.37. The Electric Capital Fund, $3,264 even. Water Operating Fund, $4,529.89. For the trust, $72,974.93. The total is $7,581,052.94.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
This is Vitale.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Ms. Byrne.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Zerlick.
Yes.
Now, there is no new business outside of, reiterate, everyone have a happy Thanksgiving, but in a very different way.
Yeah.
Keep it small, keep it safe.
Same to you, same to everybody.
Thanksgiving, everybody.
Before we say goodbye, I move that we adjourn the meeting and have a happy Thanksgiving.
That would help, right?
Signified by saying happy Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
All right, take care, be well.